My name is Wayne White and I'm the moderator for this candidates forum tonight. And I want to thank you for your participation. And on behalf of the Front Royal Catholic Civic Education Group, who are the sponsors for this event, I'd like to welcome our candidates and thank them for their participation as well. Father Gee has been called away, and so we are going to start tonight with a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation that Deacon McGurk will give. So I'll ask you to please stand and face the flag, put your hand over your pocket.
High Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which sustains one nation, in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing, please.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Ghost. Amen. Oh Lord Jesus Christ, our Savior, we ask you to bless this assembly and these candidates, and help each of them to be able to present their platforms, their positions, their ideas clearly and completely, so that we may be prepared to vote for the best candidates to make Front Royal the best town in all the country. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ. We ask this through the intercession of Saint John the Baptist, our patron saint, and through the Blessed Mother Mary and all the saints pray for us this evening, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Ghost.
Please be seated. Thank you, Deacon. I want to thank Father Gee, who has been called away and was not able to give the invocation this evening, and the parishioners of Saint John's for allowing us to use the Front Royal Hall this evening for the candidates forum. At this time, we want to also thank Mark Butler, a sheriff of Warren County, for his attendance again this year at our candidates forum. Sheriff Butler, thank you for your service and the interest in the forum. So the purpose of the forum tonight is to provide these candidates an opportunity to introduce themselves to you, the voter, and answer questions about the community issues to better inform you on their positions before the upcoming election. As the moderator, my job tonight is to facilitate this forum and ask the questions of the candidates, and ensure that we stay on time, providing a fair and equal opportunity for the candidates to share their positions and opinions on these issues. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, let me introduce to you the candidates we have here this evening. The candidates for the Front Royal Town Council, starting on your left and my right, Mr. Gene Kilby. Mr. Wayne Seelock. Mr. Josh Ingram. Mr. Zach Jackson. Ms. Amber Morris. And Mr. Bruce Rappaport. And the candidate for the mayor of Front Royal, Mrs. Lori Cockrell. Before we get started, there's some administrative announcements that we need to make so we can facilitate this forum this evening. So please note the emergency exits first. So in the back of the room is the exit one which you came in tonight, so that'll be the first exit from the room. And if we have to exit the building in an orderly and safe manner, there's also an exit at the back of the room, this behind the candidates. The door to that will lead you upstairs to where there is another exit, and through that door will take you out onto the street. This is not a political rally or a campaign event. This is, however, a public forum, and we are fortunate to have local media here this evening, and we thank them for their interest. Out of respect for the candidates, as well as everyone in attendance, we want to have a respectful and open discussion without incident. Although we anticipate an interesting dialogue, any disruptions will be immediately addressed, and if necessary, I will ask that person or persons to kindly leave the hall. At this time, I would ask that you would please silence your cell phones and other electronic devices if you have not already done so by now. Thank you. So let's go over how we're going to conduct this forum this evening. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes or 90 seconds to introduce themselves and make opening remarks. Following opening remarks, we will ask the candidates to answer five questions, which they have already been provided. We have two additional questions for the mayoral candidate, and she will also have an opportunity to answer the five candidates for the town council members. For ensuring equitable time, for all the candidates to answer each question, we will allow one minute and 30 seconds, again, 90 seconds for each answer to each question for each candidate. Mr. Mark Eggers to my rear will be the official timekeeper, and he will inform me when there is 30 seconds left in their answer or their response. I will then signal the candidate answering that question at that time, I will raise my hand, and at the end of 30 seconds, they will then be asked to conclude their remarks. There will be no questions from the audience, and we ask that you refrain from any comments at any time during the candidates' answers. Following the question and answer session, each candidate will have one minute to make closing statements, and after the last candidate's remarks, we will conclude the event. We have scheduled two hours for this event, and we want to try and remain on that timeline. The candidates have agreed to remain here in the hall after the forum, to meet and talk with anyone who has further questions of interest in their candidacy. Let me tell you a little bit about the questions we have for them tonight. So the questions were developed by the Front Royal Catholics Civic Education Group, who drafted the questions, and then provided those to the Diocese of Arlington, which reviewed and approved the questions. We gave the candidates a copy of the questions tonight upon their arrival. They have had them to look over and review for their comment. I will read those questions for each question only once, unless they ask me to read it again. Some of them are a little lengthy, I will try to articulate those as best, but I will not take requests from the audience to reread the question. So I ask that you pay attention upfront, so that they can have ample time to answer these questions. Reading them again would take more time, they understand that, they have the questions, they know what to expect. Again, the purpose of tonight's forum is to give them an opportunity to provide you the information about them and how they stand on these issues. So at this time, I would like to ask the candidates to make their opening remarks, and we will move down the table and ask each of the candidates to make their opening statements, beginning with Mr. Gene Kilby. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? First, I'd like to thank God for giving me the strength to be here tonight with you. Second, I would like to thank the parishioners of Saint John the Baptist for inviting me to introduce myself. My name is Gene M. Kilby, and I'm a longtime resident of Front Royal, Virginia, a product of Warren County Public School System. Upon graduation from Warren County, I attended Howard University on a full football scholarship. I graduated from Howard with a degree in business management with concentration in the management science and construction. Along with my studies, I had two and a half years of civil engineering and with minors of math and economics. Upon graduation from Howard, I started my first job at Pacard Electric Division of General Motors in Warren, Ohio, where I was a production supervisor and industrial engineer. After six years at Pacard, I decided that I wanted to change careers, and I went into computers because computers was quite popular back then. I became a programmer with J.C. Penney's and AT&amp;T, where I became a systems analyst. While with those companies in Atlanta, both were based out of Atlanta, I was able to develop several programs that's being utilized by the companies today. Also, while in Atlanta, I became involved in a construction business. I managed renovations and construction of homes and commercial buildings throughout the metropolitan area. Upon returning to the Washington metropolitan area, I took a job with DC Public Schools. I worked my way up from being a construction manager to the safety and environmental officer, and eventually the director of facilities for the District of Columbia Public Schools. I am elated tonight with all the support from the community to be able to share this information with you. Thank you.
Again, I'm Wayne Seelock, and I want to thank everybody for coming out. I want to thank the other Wayne over here for getting us squared away. I'm a lifelong resident of town, born and raised here. Well, I did go away for a little bit for my job, but had a 30-plus-year career in law enforcement and public safety, retiring in 2013. I am a small business owner. My wife had opened up a store in town with Sue Sterling and Embroidery. She passed about 18 months ago, and I reopened the store. So I do understand maybe the small business. I just came off of the border zoning appeals for the town, was on there 17 years. The last 15, I served as chairman, so I know a little bit about the anti-workings of the town. Did not go to Warren County. I went to Randolph-Macon up here on the hill, which I think was probably good for me at the time. But again, I want to thank you all for having me here to talk to you. You know, I've been very active with the community. I'm a life member of our local fire department down here. Right now, I serve as president of the Front Royal Police Foundation, and I was instrumental in getting the North Warren Fire Department started, and I served as their first chief. Other than that, I think that's about all. I do have, I have two children, and I have five grandchildren. So I'll pass this off to Josh.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. Thanks everyone for showing up, and thanks for the parishioners of Saint John the Baptist for having us and allowing us to express our take on some of these questions. Again, my name's John Shingram. I've lived here in Front Royal for seven years. I came to Front Royal seven years ago because it checked all the boxes for where I wanted to live. It's a small-town charm, I saw it as up and coming. I looked to where I wanted to live and, you know, at most work and play, because I work from home, I have quite a bit of a full-time job. And I just, you know, I had a sense of community service, you know, ever since I was a kid. I was involved in both Voice Council's 4-H, and I currently serve on the planning commission. So I do have a working knowledge of how the town operates currently, and I'd like to bring that knowledge into the position of town council. And I think with your support, I hope we can get across that goal on November 3rd. So again, thank you, and I'll be around if anybody has any questions.
So, everybody can hear me right? So, I'm Zach Jackson. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Really appreciate you all giving us your time to hear us out on some of these questions, if not all. And so to introduce myself, a lifelong resident of Front Royal, except when I was away at college, where I attended Bridgewater. I obtained my, sorry, Bachelor of Science in Political Science and a concentration in public policy and policy analytics. So after returning home after 2017, I partnered with my dad and opened up a freight company. We partnered with Cisco and FII. So he drove the trucks, and I managed the budget, did the compliance, did the taxes. Well, I gave the financial information to the accountants. That was a little bit too much for me. Other than that, I've been a lifelong resident. When I came back, I got interested in serving the community through coaching youth football and teaching kids martial arts. I'm the head coach of the kids' jiu-jitsu program at Battle Ground Fitness. Technically, I'm a veteran jiu-jitsu from Royal. And that time, I've seen how kids have to look elsewhere instead of towards the community for help, they have to look at private businesses. And I think that's something that we can work on as a community, and that's my drive for being here and running for office, is to help the youth of this community. And I believe that when we help the youth, we help ourselves, in a non selfish way, but promoting, you know, the correct way of learning about things. So I'll stick around after the forum for any questions. If I don't answer any questions you all may have right here. So without further ado, I give it to Amber.
Good evening. Thank you to the parishioners of Saint John's for hosting this forum and giving us this platform. In President Reagan's closing of his 1981 inaugural speech, he said, "It is time to check and reverse the growth of government, which shows signs of having grown beyond the consent of the governed. We have felt the slow chipping away of our rights and liberties over the last two years." And I am Amber Morris, an incumbent town councilwoman, vice chairman of the Warren County Republican Committee. I'm the mother of three up-and-coming freedom fighters. I'm the daughter of a mother who is in the law enforcement. I'm the sister of an active-duty Green Beret officer. I'm a community activist, and I have volunteered on many committees and subcommittees over the years to include coaching soccer teams and baseball teams, and I sat on the subcommittee for the Habitat for Humanity. I am born and raised here, and I biasly believe that this is one of the best places in the country to raise a family, retire, or to seek rest and retreat. I have one of the, I have supported Trump and his causes, and I worked for him since before supporting Trump made me a domestic terrorist. I have fought for our children and their right to life and education for many years. I have worked for conservative causes my entire adult life, and I have fought Valley Health and the monopoly that they are for more than five years. I helped to lead the charge in making Warren County a second amendment sanctuary three years ago. And a little bit about my, is my timer on?
It's got 30 seconds.
Oh. I had a combination of private and public Christian, or I'm sorry, public and private Christian schooling. I'm born and raised here in Front Royal, Warren County. I think it has great potential, and I love it, and I think the future is positive. Thank you.
My name is Bruce Rappaport, and, I'm not back on the clock.
Yeah, you're back up.
Greetings, my name is Bruce Rappaport. I was born and raised in Front Royal to a family of merchants who, for 91 years, ran a successful business on Main Street called The Boston Store. After graduating from Warren County High School, I earned a bachelor's science degree in management from Shendador University. Professionally, I have 30 years of supply chain management experience with companies in the telecommunications, electronics, aerospace, and high-end long-range rifle manufacturing industries. As a working professional, I pay attention to detail with oversight. I help solve major problems with good planning. I issue clear directives to keep the project moving. I am an altruistic and moral individual with conservative values that include supporting pro-life, second amendment rights, and law enforcement, just to name a few. You are the customer, and council is the voice of the customer. Council owes you a quality product, high-functioning government, at a reasonable cost, controlled spending, and low taxes, with on-time delivery, with no project overruns. I need and want your vote for town council so that we can work together to secure a bright future for the town. Thank you.
So my name is Lori Anne A. Cockrell. I was born and raised in Front Royal. I graduated from Warren County High School in 1985, and then I received a Bachelor of Arts in 1990 from Barry Watson, and a Master of Science in 1992. I've been married 26 years to my husband Ricky. We have two children, Blake and Ansley, who are both graduates of Warren County High School. Ansley's a nurse, and Blake is a promising attorney. My parents, who, my parents are, they're really my essence, but they instill faith, family, and education. They also believe we should give back to our community to make a difference for others. I am a 33-year veteran educator in Warren County Public Schools. Teaching's always been my passion. While being a teacher, has afforded me the opportunity to give back to my community as serving as your mayor will be a continuation of my service to my hometown. As mayor, I only vote in the event of a tie, therefore I would be looking for direction from council with respect to any issue that comes before it. The office of mayor belongs to the citizens of Front Royal, not one individual person, and therefore as mayor, I will operate in a manner that all the citizens of Front Royal feel they have a voice in their government. I've got more, but I'm running out of time right now. I want to make Front Royal a great place for people to live, work, and raise their families. As a fiscally conservative councilman, I've tried to focus on providing quality services with our financial means, and I'll just save the rest in a minute. Thank you.
So as I said earlier, we have five questions for the town council candidates, and we have two additional ones for the mayor. We'll start with those questions for the candidates as they are seated again, and I'll begin asking the questions, the candidates, in the order which they're seated, and then I will change that order for each question subsequently. So as we move down the row, the next question will go to the next person in line to start the answer first. So that gives everybody a fair chance. The candidates had the questions in front of them, as I said, it looked like midterm exam up here earlier. When I gave them these questions, they were sitting down, and it was just instinctive that they took out their pens and pencils and they started writing. And then they forgot about the fact that they were having an opening statement, so they're trying to do that at the same time, and then I told them I only had 90 seconds, and they were trying to edit that down. So thank you very much for your time, appreciation for what we're trying to achieve here tonight. So let's start with the first question, and Mr. Kilby, we're going to start with you as the answer. I'm going to read these once, they have them, and we'll save some time that way. The first question has to do with Warren County schools. Over the past two years, parents' concerns over COVID restrictions, school curricula, and discipline have contributed to a decline in public school attendance. In fact, public records show that 23% of school-aged children in Warren County are no longer attending public schools. AV is always a challenge. I worked in AV when I was in the Army, it never fails. What can go wrong will go wrong, Murphy's Law is always rampant, right, John? Okay. So the second part of the question. Would you, as a member of town council, support a town property tax credit of some form for town residents who choose to send their children to private schools or homeschool, since their children are currently not attending public schools, which saves the taxpayers approximately $15,000 per student per year? Why or why not? And I asked Mr. Kilby to answer the question. Mr. Kilby, please.
Yes, I am a product of the public school system, so I support public education, period. I'm not sure that it would cost, or it would save the taxpayers $15,000 per student, because the vast majority of that money comes from the state. And I just don't know if we have the ability to change that from the state. Public education is very important to all of the citizens. Also, when, when you talk about a property tax credit, what about the people that don't have children? What about the elderly people that live in this community? Will they get a tax credit? The Constitution says that we must provide a good public education for all students. If a family is lucky enough to have the funds to send their child to a private school, then they have that choice. I know it's probably not a popular answer in this arena, but you have to carefully consider this question before you say that you should support it. Thank you.
Sticky switch. Still question number one.
Yes, same question.
Well, as I said before, I don't think that the town council really has a lot to say about what goes on in the county schools. We have to understand that the county, which every citizen in town pays county taxes. We have to understand that the schools, they're mandated, and they get funding from, of course, the county and the town, but the curriculum and the things they do comes from the state, and that's why we have an elected school board. If you want to see changes, go to the school board, talk to them, go out and vote for the right school board that you think will do a better job. I think council could maybe go to them and make suggestions to them on different things that we could, that we would like to see done. But, and again, the private schools, I can't say I'm a product of a private school. I know some people that homeschool their children. I agree with both. I think it's your right to choose if you want your children to go to public school, private school, or stay home, be homeschooled. Would I go for, the taxpayers, you get a break? No, because, you know, we don't know, you know, I don't have any children in school anymore, so, and say he does, am I going to get the same tax break? No. So I think it needs to be fair across the board when it comes to taxes.
Well, to answer that question right off the bat, yes, I would be in favor if a tax credit could be, could work, and that's if the town would have the authority to do so. And I say that because in this particular setting where we are in Front Royal, it is a fact that a lot of the students that do here go to private schools, and throughout the county as well. So it does, it does present itself as a unique situation, but I'd like to explore that as a possibility for our town, if that would be, if that's a possibility, whether it be through tax credits, through personal property taxes. I know a lot of us have concerned as town residents about paying property taxes for both town and county, and that's been, that's been an ongoing discussion with both council and, of course, board of supervisors. So yes, and I'm not sure yet, I do understand the complexity of trying to spread it out amongst those who don't have children or kids, don't have kids in school anymore, but families who do have children in school, I think that with the quality of education that I've seen throughout some of the public, or private schools in this area, yeah, I mean, I would like to explore that possibility.
So right off the bat, kind of like Josh, yes, I think parents have a choice in where they send their schools, and it's been a very important thing. To kind of go off, but I understand that the money's got to come from somewhere if we're giving credit to others. Now, I think there needs to be some type of investigation into this. It's not something we can just roll out. There has to be a deep, considered thought put into this, that way no taxpayers paying an extra burden for a credit given to someone else. Now, saying that, I think parents don't, 23% of parents don't send their kids to Now, saying that, I think parents don't, 23% of parents don't send their kids to Warren County Public Schools because they don't think that's where they can get the best education. And that's saying something. So that's our job as council to try to work with, liaison with the Board of Supervisors, and try to work with the school board in some way, super form. Granted, we don't have control over what goes on in the public schools. However, I will say that since our residents send their children there, we should have some type of say, and we should have some type of power in that regard. So that's where I stand on that.
This is a very easy question for me to answer. That $15,000 per student figure is factual, and it comes from a combination of state, federal, and local tax dollars, which we pay all of. Me, as a Front Royal citizen, I pay Front Royal taxes, I pay county taxes, and I pay state taxes. I absolutely support giving a tax credit to those whose children aren't, putting a pool in the infrastructure, and using the technology, and the electricity, and the food services at the school. I helped campaign for Governor Youngkin. I spoke to him before the primary last year to see if he would support school choice and do something about parental rights. I mentioned earlier, I have three kids. They've both gone to private school and public school, and when I couldn't afford private school, I got a second job. I do not think that those whose children are not going to the school should be paying or getting an allotted credit against them for that, or paying the taxes on that. And I'll just remind everybody, the people last year who were shouting, "They don't have kids in the school. They don't have a say over the school board." Well, those people are paying for the schools, so they do have a say. It's very relevant, and I'll leave it at that, but I absolutely would support a tax credit for those who aren't utilizing the school system.
Okay. I'm a product of the Warren County Public School system. However, I would support a tax credit, and I'll tell you why. Things are different now than when I went to school, okay? Discipline is a big deal with me. When I went to school, if you got out of line, there was a big mallet with the principal waiting for you, okay? All right? Biggest problem that I saw in public schools, and when I went to school, was smoking in the bathroom. It's a little bit different today from what I've been hearing. Parents are up in arms about different issues, and they don't have any reason to lie about it. I am impressed by the Arizona bill. It's, I believe it's 35, 80-something. They have figured out a way to have a tax credit for the people who want a choice to send their kids to private school, or homeschooling, or whatever. I'm all for that, and I think that we should take a look at that. I will add that Governor Youngkin is looking at endorsing $150 million for charter schools.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Overhand close. So let me just start off, because everybody is, I too am a product of Warren County Public Schools. All of my siblings, my children, and obviously, I'm an educator of Warren County Public Schools, and I think we do great things. I do think that some parents don't have the opportunity to homeschool or to choose private education, but that's really not my answer to this question. The town of Front Royal has no control over the local school system. We have a lot of responsibilities. That just doesn't happen to be one of them. However, every citizen of Warren County has a voice and a representation on the Warren County School Board, but the school's budget is determined by the Warren County Board of Supervisors, which citizens also have a voice in who they elect to these positions. As a parent myself, I was my children's first teacher, just like any of the parents in this room. And I truly believe parents have every right to choose how to educate their children. Parents know what is in their own children's best interest, therefore, they know how they want to educate their children. With that being said, I've spent the last 33 years in educating, assisting parents in educating their children. As for a property tax credit, since the town doesn't bear any expense for the schools in our budget, giving a tax credit wouldn't make sense to me, because the services the town provides isn't affected by the enrollment of the school system, and I think this might be a better question for the Board of Supervisors, because their budget is impacted by lower
All good answers. Thank you. Candidates, we'll move to question number two and start with Mr.
Seelaw.
Seelaw.
Seelaw, right. Just seeing if you were paying attention. This one has to do with Front Royal Economic Development Authority, and more specifically, data center recommendation. The Front Royal Economic Development Authority, or FIDA, has recommended bringing data centers to Front Royal. The town council has been asked to approve a zoning change to facilitate that proposal. Data centers have environmental and infrastructure, as well as financial issues associated with them. The questions to the candidates are, do you believe that before the council makes its zoning decision, FIDA should hold public hearings to address community concerns? The second part to that question, what oversight mechanisms would you recommend for the councils to put in place to ensure transparency of a project of that magnitude? We'll start with Mr. Kilby. First part of the question, I don't think we have the infrastructure here to support data centers. You go a few counties over, and you're seeing problems there. They cause brownouts. I don't support data centers. They're going to put in this large building and put 15, 20 people in the building to run the whole building. That's not going to help us that much. And I just, and in 15 years, they're probably going to be obsolete, so we're going to have a big warehouse sitting around with nothing in it, that the property could have been used for something else. Mechanisms, I just think they would have to bring everything before our zoning people, and then zoning could bring it back to council and explain everything to council. And public hearings, absolutely. I think there should be several, and they should be during the day and in the evening because of people working this year. Everybody needs to understand what we're going to be getting into if we bring these data centers in. And the county I'm talking about is Loudoun County. People, and close to them, they're losing their TVs, their microwaves, their electronic computers because of the brownouts these things are causing. So I would have to say no, and if it turns out that they want to, that they can bring them in, I think we need to have, I don't think we can do proffers anymore, but we need to have something there that they have to understand. They have to provide us with the infrastructure and not put it back on our taxpayers to provide Thank you.
Well, to answer the question about FIDA holding public hearings, yes, I think there should be public hearings. As a current member of the planning commission, I have pretty extensive knowledge on this particular situation. I, well, as part of the planning commission, we had recommended, when this came to our attention, a recommendation of approval with a special use permit for data centers, okay? So with that said, that would give council the authority to judge a data center on a case-by-case basis. So that answers hopefully the second question about putting measures in place to, for transparency and for mitigating, you know, the public input. However, my take on data centers are, is that, you know, they should be held to close, they should be held with close grouping. I've worked in data centers. I did security systems for them for about three years, so I know the footprint that they, that they can put on a community. We only have a certain amount of real estate currently in town that is even eligible for data centers. That's our current I-2 zone. So the question before the council now is that whether or not data centers can be allowed with special use permit. Now, with FIDA being involved, that's fine. If they want to have their say in it, have their public hearing, that's up to them. We'll say that much. So that's where I stand on that issue. And anybody who wants to ask me anything further adept with that, I'd like to talk to them afterwards.
So in regards to FIDA holding public hearings, yes. I think the way to get transparency is to bring the data center managers and the ones who are overseeing the project to the public and address council as well. I think that's a very important step in making sure we have the best information presented possible, not only to us as a council, but to you all as the citizens. In addition to that, I believe that having the data centers used as a special use permit allow the citizens to not only have the one public hearing from FIDA, or multiple, however they see fit, or however you as the taxpayer see fit, I should say. I think having a special use permit allows more transparency in front of council as well, and that kind of gives us, like Josh said, a case-by-case analysis. That way, we're not judging it as a, you know, one-size-fits-all scenario. We're looking at it as one by one and not just a, you know, blanket set. So that's my answer.
Okay, I'll answer this two-part question first and then tell you the why. Yes, I believe FIDA should hold many public hearings to address the community concerns, and I believe that the oversight mechanisms of this magnitude of a project are actually ongoing. So since my fellow former councilman, Scott Lloyd, wasn't on council, this already came before council, and I proudly killed the initial motion. No amount of tax revenue is worth what defines our sense of community or what makes us beautiful. The last undeveloped portion of town land, which is not zoned for this to be a data center, is the property that was in question that came before council. There should be no rushing or streamlining and development of this magnitude. If it's a pile of crap and it's served on a gold plate, it's still a pile of crap, and that's what I said in the public comment portion of that motion that I killed before the town council. They don't bring jobs. They usually employ about 10 people. They're ugly, and there's no trajectory to base these off of. I think Mr. Seelaw mentioned it. I've done a lot of research. I've gone to Loudoun County and spoke to them. They regret not fighting this. If you drive through Falkir County right now, there are signs in all the medians that say, "Say no to data centers, say no to Amazon." And I think coming from Loudoun County where they have these, and they're telling you they're a terrible idea, you should listen to them, and you should use that as a learning lesson. They do cause brownouts, so what happens is they take a terrible surge against our power and our water and all of our utilities, and I don't agree with making them a special use permit either. No to data centers entirely.
Okay. So the first part of the question is, should we hold public hearings? Absolutely, yes. Now, what kind of oversight? Well, the special use permit will begin the oversight process. However, the key here for total transparency is these council members should not be signing non-disclosure agreements, because as soon as you sign that non-disclosure agreement, you can't talk about it, okay? All right? If the data centers don't want to come in, see ya. I have property in Prince William County. Currently, they have 32 data centers there. There's 15 more on the books. Amber Lane Station has housing that's like 100 yards away from a proposed 270-acre data center. There are protests going on day and night. What do data centers give you? They promise you a lot of revenue, right? But then they turn around and they reclassify themselves so that they can get a reduced amount of money that they pay, okay? They also, they're a hog on water, they're a hog on electric, they take up a lot of space, they're ugly buildings, as Ms. Morris suggested, a lot of noise. They make a lot of noise because they have big air conditioning systems on top of them, and they have few jobs. So that's my position on data centers.
Thank you. So the question was, do you believe that before the council makes its zoning decision, FIDA should hold public hearings to address community concerns? First, I would say that's not just for data centers, that's for any large projects. Absolutely, public hearings should and would be held for citizen input. When the data centers first was being talked about and shared with us, we immediately, I started immediately seeing things in the paper, in the press, about other areas, and one of the things that I asked was for us to contact the other places and find out, like, what, if you could change anything, what would you do differently to find out? Because as Amber mentioned, and Bruce mentioned, and other people mentioned, you can't go back. You can't go back, so you have to know everything before, ahead of time. The other question was, what oversight mechanisms would you recommend to put in place to ensure transparency of a project of this magnitude? I believe it's the role of FIDA and really council to educate the public on any large projects, providing pros and cons to see if it's a good fit for our community, but getting public input will be part of this process.
I do, sir.
As far as public hearings to address community concerns, I absolutely agree that there should be public hearings for any project or any zoning request. There should be public hearings, which I believe is already in place. Oversight mechanisms, I think we need to make sure that we require a complete presentation and review, which would have the infrastructure concerns and everything that's involved in It's the council's duty to make sure that the community is well aware of anything that's going on in the town. Also, I believe that we don't have the property within the town limits to accommodate data centers.
The third question we have for the candidates this evening follows along the same theme in terms of economic development within Front Royal. Many say Front Royal has untapped economic development potential. What would you do to attract more businesses in this community with better-paying jobs? And please give us some examples of those businesses that you believe would be a good fit for our community, and we'll start with Mr. Ring.
Well, first off, I would look for businesses that promote working from home. I mean, I think it's important that we have workers that stay here in town. I know workers that tend to commute, you know? When you're traveling away from work, you're spending the bulk of your day away from home. And I think that by staying home, you'll keep your resources here as well. And as far as, another aspect of businesses I'd like to see coming to town would be businesses that promote our outdoor activities that we have here. We have access to the rivers, I think that's been untapped, that could be better utilized. We have access, of course, to Skyline Drive. I know it's been our big economic boost, particularly this time of year that's coming up soon. But I think that, you know, we can do more with what we already have. I'm not for bringing big businesses in that's going to take away our small-town charm. I think everybody's in agreement that we need to keep what we have intact and grow smart. And also, you know, I'm a big history nerd, so... And, and also, you know, I'm a big history nerd, so those of you who know me, that, you know, again, one of the reasons I moved here was because of the Big Sur Water. So this town's full of history. I think any business that can promote our historical significance will draw business. I mean, we are a bastion for those who live further east of here. You know, I think that we could be one of the, one of the destination counties of, of the valley for that matter. We already have it in place, I think it's, or got the resources in place, I think we just need to make use of them. So, thank you.
So we're a unique town. We peak, our small town, our small businesses peak as far as revenue goes and tourists come in. So I think it's important that we take advantage of the uniqueness that we have. So restaurants and things like that, of course, they're, they're doing well around this time of year. But I would like to see things that kind of go towards the tourism that attracts people here. Like Josh said, we have a lot of natural elements in place, such as the river, the hiking trails and things of that nature. So we have to take advantage of that. People who go on a hike, they like to stop somewhere, grab a bite before they head back, or they want a nice place where they can stay. So I think it's important that we bring in things that accommodate that and accommodate, you know, the tourists that come to the town and spend their money here. Because, you know, it is a small town, so we want to make sure people come back to spend their money here, but we want to keep it small. We want to make sure they don't stay here for two, right? So we want to keep this small-town charm. So I think that's important. And I think the way we do that is taking advantage of not only the resources we have in place, but what makes Front Royal unique. And that's the natural beauty that it has. And, you know, that's, that's pretty much where I stand on it.
One of the things that I've been doing, I'll continue to do, and I highly encourage all of you to do about bringing jobs to Front Royal, is contact our Congressman Ben Klein. As many of you know, we were ripped off with the promise of IT Federal out on the Avtech site, and that was a site that was destroyed by the federal government, and the EPA deemed it, you know, undevelopable, undevelopable for a number of ti- years. So with that being said, we need living wage jobs here for the people that are here and the children that go to college and want to come back and continue to live here and be with their family. I don't understand how we get excited. I found out about a year or two ago, we were getting a new restaurant in the corridor, and I found out it was another Taco Bell. And I'm on record saying this. Now, instead of driving five minutes to Taco Bell, I can only drive seven minutes. It brought about 10 part-time, no-benefit paying jobs. We need real, living wage jobs brought here. And I'll do everything I can, but we need to encourage our Congressman Ben Klein to do that. You look over to Frederick County in Winchester, they have FEMA, they have the Army Corps of Engineers, they have all kinds of federal jobs over there. Why can't Warren County get that? I would like a new grocery store on the south end of town, something especially allergen-friendly like a Whole Foods or Wegmans. Competition improves quality and it drives down the price of retail. If you look out at Lowe's, when they started that development, they put an Aldi out there. Retail follows retail. So while I don't want to develop the town of Front Royal with a ton of retail, we have empty spaces open that need to be filled in the south end of town. So that's all I have to say on that.
What is, what is behind economic development? Build your tax base, right? So how do you build your tax base? If you're going to have an economic development authority, then you need a strong EDA director, someone who's been there, done it, and, and knows his Ps and Qs. The, my, my idea behind companies, and I'm going to raise the bar a little bit, but I'm in manufacturing, so you don't have to have a large Lockheed Martin come into Front Royal, but you can have what they call contract manufacturing companies. Contract manufacturing companies operate like a big company. They have, like, engineers, production managers, quality control guys, logistics people, supply chain people, like me, right? And we all get paid decent wages. This could be in companies like an aerospace, military-type of work, IT, pharmaceutical, even biotech. And I will say this, I would even like to see a, a data center decommissioned company come in, okay? Because they are eco-friendly, okay?
So first, I'd like to say I do agree with Amber when I always think about Winchester. Growing up here, when, when I look at what has gone on in Winchester and how it's grown, I keep asking myself, why haven't we been able to do that? They have so many places that have good paying jobs. We do have the, the corridor and the things that are going on out there. We also have the Virginia Landport, which should attract businesses because that, the ability for them to move the products. But I do want to say, we really need redevelopment in the town as much as if not more than we need new development. Because we have so many places that are just sitting empty, and you drive by it and think, you know, what could go there? What's the potential? Some things that I've heard from citizens, or not some things, I've heard it a lot, more retail opportunities, men in the room. If you think about where, where, where could you buy clothing, right? There's not really a place for men or, or women, dress clothing. I mean, to say, we definitely need another grocery store. A big thing I'm pushing for is a hotel. Wouldn't it be nice to have a quality hotel in the town limits? I'd like to see the old Avtech site utilized. We have a lot of natural beauty that we should be able to attract businesses that could capitalize on it, promote it. But also, we need more opportunities for family and youth in our community. So I'll stop there. Just going to say, Chuck E. Cheese and sports clothes.
Business, wages, education, and construction projects. Examples of businesses that will be a good fit for our community is professional companies that may not be too large, but employ a few people with living wages. I think we need to boost the tourism because that is one of our major contributors to the economic development in, in, in this area. I don't know about you, I, I look around all the time trying to find a printing place. The Office Depot moved out of Front Royal. The examples are the clothing stores for men, especially for big men like myself and So, so all of these things work hand, they work hand in hand in order to make a good Public partnerships with companies to entice them to come to this area and make this their own. Thank you.
One thing I'm a big proponent of, when we find somebody that wants to come to town, I don't care if it's a mom-and-pop business that's going to go to Main Street, or if it's going to be a grocery store, or it's going to be some other kind of big facility. We need, the cost across the board needs to be the same. You know, not, like, for your hookups and things, they should be about this. I know bigger buildings are going to take more, but it would need to be upfront and open about what it's going to cost them to come here. For years, well, making it back up, for years and years, Front Royal has been a bedroom community, as I can remember. You know, people live here, they would commute to Northern Virginia. But back to tourism, we have things here, like the rest of them have alluded to, that we can have more people staying in hotels, they're going to buy food, they're going to buy gas. Myself, yes, I'm a motorcycle rider. I drive all the way to Pigeon Falls, Tennessee, so I can do one ride that's 11 miles long. We've got one right here. Let's advertise it. The one down there is called The Tale of the Dragon. It's 318 curves and 11 miles. Wonderful. We have Brown Town Road, Goodyear Matter Loop, and Bentonville-Brown Town Road. That has the same amount of turns, if not more. And I think the people would stay in the hotels, they're going to buy food in our restaurants. I'll probably get a dirty look from Sheriff back there because there's going to be more problems for him. But on the weekends, the place is packed down there. I think we have the same thing right here. You know, we already got Skyline Drive, they go another quarter mile up the road, and they've got it. So, thank you.
The next topic has to deal with the community and the derelict buildings in Front Royal. We'll start with Mr. Jackson on this particular question. Many citizens are concerned about derelict buildings that reflect poorly on the town. Some even argue that the town has limited options to correct these problems. However, research suggests a possible approach to reducing derelict buildings would be to tax, with tax assessments that reflect the actual property market value. For example, the derelict building at Commerce Avenue and Sixth Street is zoned for commercial use and is in a high-traffic area. In 2021, the building was assessed and taxed at $140,000. In this year, it was assessed at $147,000. However, in August of this year, the building was listed for sale at $275,000. In other words, it was only assessed at just about half of its commercial real estate value. If derelict buildings were assessed and taxed at their true market value, owners may be less likely to leave them idle and/or have them repaired. Real estate assessment is the responsibility of the Warren County Government. If you were elected, what would you do to resolve the under-assessment value of derelict buildings with the county to remove or improve these facilities? A lot of questions. We'll start with Mr. Jackson. He's been awaiting all night for this question.
So, right off the bat, I'm not a fan of telling anybody what they can or can't do with their property. But at the same time, I think that's something we'd have to work with zoning on. It's, this is a tough one for me, because I believe that if an owner feels like they want to list their house at $275,000, if the right buyer approaches, they'll purchase the house. But at the same time, I also think it's right for a way to, you know, not like you said, like the question says, not leave them idle if we tax them for what they're trying to sell it for. It'll inspire them. But it's tough for me because I don't believe in one, pricing someone over their house, and/or two, telling them what, how much they can sell it for, or putting the burden on someone else just because they're trying to sell their house. If the taxes, if it's assessed at $140,000 and they want to make $135,000 profit, that's the prerogative. But I think it's important that we work with zoning, so these buildings don't become condemned in ISOs. Because I'm pretty sure the building in question here is a building that I've been looking at since I've been born, basically. And I was born in 1994, I'm the young one here, no offense to any of you. But I've been looking at that building as long as, I mean, my whole life, and nothing's been done. So I think it's, I think it's time to do something instead of, you know, just beating around the bush. But I mean, it's going to, I, I hate to say that it's going to take time, because how can it take any more time at this point? But at the same time, I think it's something that we need to work with the homeowner on, and the owner coming over to the zoning department, out in there.
I was actually waiting for this question, eager to answer, and I'm glad it's here. So I'm going to preface it with, I hope that building sells, and I hope we see something great come of it. In 2018, I lobbied the town council to pass a derelict, blighted building code enforcement program through the Planning, Zoning, and Commission Department. It was implemented, and no funds were allotted for it. They had no line item for it in the budget. So we adopted a code that we had no intentions of enforcing. I'm actually proud to say that the current council that I sit on today has brought that back up. And whether I'm on council come next year, we, I, we are enforcing it. We've budgeted funds for it, we are working on it, the committee will be put together within the next month. And I'll just also say, I'm a mortgage broker by trade, and assessments are unfortunately highly inaccurate. I encourage any property owners in here to go home and look at them on the Warren County GIS website. I own two homes in Front Royal, Warren County, and they are also assessed at half of what they're worth. There's a lot that plays into value, into an appraisal value. There's a 40-year record-high inflation right now. There's a demand for real estate right now. And I'll also say, Petersburg, Virginia, had a Ramada Inn, and a lot of people in Virginia refer to it as the granddaddy of derelict. Governor Youngkin just suggested something the day that they tore it down that seemed baffling to so many, and it's very common sense to me. He said, this initiative, they tore the Ramada Inn down to redevelop it, it's government-led, government-supported, for free enterprise, and that's what our government is all about. So we are working on that actively. Thank you.
Okay, what would I do with regard to this subject matter? The bottom line is, you need a strong code enforcement. She was referring to, I believe, Chapter 9-303, that they may have revamped. I'm going to use as an example Ashland, Kentucky. Ashland, Kentucky, had a big problem with blight and abandoned buildings, and they have figured out a way to raise 13, 14 buildings in their, in their town of 20,000. The, one of the things that they did was, they looked at the property taxes that these landowners were paying, and they came up with the idea that they would write an ordinance of, if you're paying, say, $1,500 a year, we will tax, we will, we will reclassify your tax, and we will tax you four times. So if you're, if that property owner's paying $6,000 a year, they're going to, it's going to get their attention because it's going to hit their, their pocketbook. So that's one of the suggestions that I would have to kind of get their attention to maybe improve the properties. Thank you.
So, as Amber said, this is an issue that the town's been working on for a while. I know when I came on board in January of 2020, not long after that, we talked about even looking at setbacks and the things that would encourage somebody with, with derelict property, if they, if, if it was inhibited for them to improve it. So we talked about that, but, for, for now, and as Amber mentioned, and Zach too, you have to have a council that has an appetite for going after these derelict buildings, and sometimes that's not always popular. But I do believe right now that, that we have that in place. We currently have a certified, we have a staff member who is nearing her final certification as a property maintenance official, and we have adopted a blighted property policy that's going to hold property owners accountable. I think the citizens of Front Royal would like to see us tackle this issue, and they would support us as we move forward. The assessment of the real estate property, I have to tell you all, like, reading this tonight, this is the first time that I've read any of that suggestion. What a unique way to look at that. And if council wants to move forward with this, I would certainly support looking into it, if it would encourage, if it would encourage the, the process of getting, getting these buildings either down or improved. Amber, I believe it's your turn.
Oh.
Derelict buildings in Front Royal. I too have been passing by this property at Sixth and Commerce Avenue for quite a while. I don't know why their assessment is so low in comparison to the value, because I live on Shenandoah Shores Road, and my assessment- on Shenandoah Shores Road, and my assessment is, is pretty much what I could sell the property for. So I don't know how that happens. But anyway, we need to make sure that we have a code in place, and once we have the code in place, it needs to be enforced, and it needs to be enforced vigorously, and it needs to be enforced to all areas of the town, not just a few areas. From my understanding, there was a property on South, on Osage Street that received the letter, but then two other properties right down the street did not receive letters. So that made me feel a little funny. I said, well, why one property, but not the others that were in just, in the same condition or worse? So the key to dealing with the derelict properties is enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. Thank you.
I have to agree about enforcement. Just coming off the Board of Zoning, I see, I would hear about the phone calls for the enforcement officer that we had. Anything from this building in particular all the way down to grass being more than 15 inches high, which is town code. My concern with the building that we're talking about right now, you know, we have an abundance of homeless people for some reason. I'm afraid they're going to go in there, and that's where we're going to find them. And I don't mean find them to get them out. I'm afraid they're going to try to have heat or something and end up with the problem that we won't have the house anymore to worry about is kind of my feeling on it. But I think we need to get with, with zoning when they get their new enforcement officer in. We need to get with, we need to step that into the county, get the county fire marshal involved in it to try and get that one taken down. I think as far as the assessments go, I've said this before, I think the, the town council and the Board of Supervisors needs to appoint a liaison person for each one. Those two get together separately from everybody. They can take whatever each board wants to say about either upping the assessments on the, on the properties or whatever they want to do, and both boards can get onboard together, I guess is lack of better words, and maybe get something worked out with these properties. I notice they're shoveling around town. They really look bad. There's one out on North Royal Avenue that's bad. Thank you.
In regards to resolving the under-assessment of the, of the derelict buildings, I don't necessarily think a tax increase will be the best approach to resolve this. I think, I echo what the fellow candidates said as enforcement. As a planning commissioner, I can say that steps are being taken to rigorously, or I should say more rigorously, enforce our current ordinance that we have in, in place. As Councilwoman Moore said, there is going to be some funding put aside for code enforcement for derelict buildings. And I think that in order to, even if you're going to even address the undervalued assessment, you have to determine what a, what a derelict building is, and the town already has that in place. As far as what's been done and being active to resolve the issue, I think that with the recent passing of the ordinance to allow special use permits for short-term rooms, I know as, my thought was that, that would, that would help incentivize people for improving some of these homes. Now, we have yet to see some of this to come to fruition, but that's one way that I look at it, is a possibility of improving, you know, some of the aesthetics of some of these buildings. But as far as the assessment goes, I think that's a complex situation with the market, and I don't know if town council should have any authority for those raising taxes to enforce code that already, that we already have. So, thank you.
So for our final question to the candidates for town council, we are talking about the future of Main Street here in Front Royal, and we're going to start with Amber as a. We understand that people have different opinions as to making Main Street a pedestrian-only mall between Chester Avenue and Royal Avenue. Where do you stand on the idea of such a change, and why or why not?
Thank you. If you haven't noticed already, I'm a firm believer in that we are a government of the people, for the people, by the people. Therefore, my opinion on this topic is irrelevant. We're going to hold public hearings coming up on this. It was something that was discussed before I came onto council last November, and I think whatever the majority asks for is what we'll do. However, I will say, I've seen and observed over the years of having family who are small business owners on Main Street, something needs to be done about the traffic flow on Main Street. Whether that be one-way, I'm not sure what the answer is at this time. But any given day, I've worked on Main Street for the last five years. You go down, and there's a food truck unloading to distribute at, you know, any of the eateries or wineries down there. You're sitting, you're stuck, or a FedEx or a UPS driver, you can't get around it. So I'm not sure that two-way traffic is the answer, and I'm not sure that a one-way street is either. I'm not an expert on that subject, and I'm not going to pretend to be. I think a study should be done, and I think public input should be followed. One thing I've also been reading up on and researching is part-time closures. So a lot of you may know during COVID, they temporarily closed down Main Street and made it a walking mall, and you could serve alcohol to go and drink it outside. Thank you, Governor Northam, for encouraging that. And I took my kids down, and they rode their bikes up and down Main Street while we shopped in and out of the shops. So I don't know if a part-time closure, something temporary on nights or weekends or seasonal would be viable, but we'll have to see what comes with the study and what the public wants because that's absolutely what I'll do.
Okay, on this subject matter, I'm hoping that this COVID is an aberration that we're going to be able to look in the rearview mirror. I'm hoping. But I would say this, my mother ran a business on, like I said earlier, my mother ran a business on Main Street for 70, she ran it for 71 years, my uncle ran it for the first 20 years. And she would always say, if you close Main Street, you will kill it. So take it from a person who lasted on Main Street for 71 years that you should keep it open to traffic. The other thing is, there's been studies done on closure of Main Street, of these downtown pedestrian walls for about, since 1950, and they have found that 89% of them fail. And why do they fail? They fail because, we, a college town, okay? UVA has 21,000 students, and they're within a mile of downtown. Burlington, Vermont is another example. University of Vermont has 12,000 students, they're within a mile from downtown. So high density is key to making this work. Foot traffic is key to making it work. Don't close Main Street. And they won't be able to pay their bills at the Front Royal Town Council because it's going to be closed at Royal Avenue all the way back to Chester.
Front Royal Town Hall. Town Hall, they don't pay.
Town Hall.
No, they don't pass.
Yeah, thank you, soon-to-be Mayor Cockle.
Thank you. Okay, Main Street. When I came on council, the pandemic literally followed the month after, and the pandemic, when it, when it shut down, Amber brought it up, but that was one of the ideas to, to help some of the businesses downtown was to, to close it on the weekends. And those of you that followed that whole situation, there were some who wanted it closed, some who didn't. In the beginning, we were heroes because we closed it. By the end, we were villains. So there, there was really that, you know, not really sure what people wanted, but here's what I think moving forward. I think we need to find out what the businesses and the citizens want for the future of Main Street, but parking is an issue. It's always been an issue. We not only have businesses who need parking for their customers, but we also have residents who live on Main Street who need parking access. In a perfect world, we'd find a way to add a parking garage like they did in Winchester. I actually think they have two now, maybe three, that could address our parking issue, but then we'd have to find the location that everyone would be okay with, and then, of course, the funds to make that happen. So I have suggested before, I'm pretty sure it's, it's on a video somewhere, but that we should survey citizens and the Main Street business owners to gather direction from the citizens because they are the most impacted by these decisions.
Making Main Street a pedestrian mall, I have to agree with Mr. Rappaport that, I read a similar study, that you have to have the foot traffic in order for a pedestrian mall to work out. So maybe we need to update, just get an update on the study and bring it to, to the people, especially the businesses that are operating on Main Street. I know I really enjoy being able to pull up in front of Town Hall and go in and pay my electric bill. You know, it's just a few steps rather than going all the way in the back parking. Parking problem is an issue in Front Royal, and we need to consider all of these things prior to making a rash decision and make sure that the public is thoroughly, thoroughly involved in this process. Thank you.
Wow, Main Street. Been many things tried on Main Street over the years. Main Street was one-way at one time with parking on both sides of the street. Didn't work. Now you want to close it from Main Street, or from Chester Street to Royal Avenue. I think it was Mr. Rappaport. I have to agree with him. The town moves over to the old banks, and now we're going to close it so you can't get to it to pay your bill. There's handicapped people that go back through the drive-thru. There's people that maybe have a short-term illness, they go back through the drive-thru. What are we going to do with it? I don't see it working. I think if they want to do, if we, studies be done, they get, need to get with the downtown business people first, invite them to a, just a meeting with them, explain to them what we want to do, then have a public hearing about it. But I, I am just totally against, every time you turn around, now, now you want to block Main Street, so you want to take away 30-some parking spaces that go from Chester to up to, I guess it's Crescent Street. You know, you're taking those away. I just, if we have a problem with the trucks, let's, somebody get with the local police department, have them go down. If you walk up and down behind the room, the, the buildings, there's all kinds of back entrances to those buildings with the trucks in the back, and they can unload there. Thank you.
Well, folks, I'm going to be honest, I'm a little in defense on this. I, I see arguments to both points, and, and I, I, I mean, I think that the most important thing to do for, for me as, as a council member, I feel like that I would do my best to implement what the folks want, and what the people want for this, and that would be involved, getting the input from the stakeholders and from the local businesses, the public in general. I think it's a very tough question to ask. I mean, it's, it's a great question. I'm actually glad it was asked. It was one of, one of the first questions I noticed when I first got picked this list tonight. But yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of stung on this one. I think what Councilwoman, I hope in the future Mayor Cockle said, I echo her sentence. I mean, this is something that, that it's going to take, you know, in order to make a decision that works for everybody, I think it's just going to have to be some sort of study, something that, I don't think you're going to be able to please everybody by doing it one way or the other. Perhaps there could be some limited closure of some sort, you know? I just think that, my take is, we're going to have to get some, I'm going to have to get some input and, and make that decision for what the people want.
All right, so going tough seems a little bit harder than I thought it would be to not sound like a broken record. However, I think, given the studies that we've just had in the last five minutes, I think one of the compromises would be that we close it after Town Hall. So we're getting feedback, and that's what we're here for. So I think it's important, again, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, that we get the important feedback. And I think it's important that we do it in certain events. I don't think it's just right to do it during one big event, right? Because that's when Main Street already has a lot of traffic. I think it's important that we kind of divvy up the survey sample and try to get all the potential variables we can. That way, we can make the best informed decision. But this isn't going to be a rollout situation, like, oh, three weeks later, Main Street's closed. Like, this is going to take careful planning and, you know, obvious feedback, and we're going to be real critical and obvious feedback from not only you as the public, but the stakeholders as well, as far as the business owners go. And I think, I can't remember who said it, but having the business owners sit with us personally, you know, just as council, and meet with us and kind of give us their own opinions, and, you know, with the trucks, the trucks don't have access to the back. So that creates an issue. But we don't, we can't compromise unless we have the feedback and everybody's opinion. So I encourage you, if you're asked about it, to give us that feedback. That way, we can make the best informed decision. Mr. Ingram, you know, said it perfectly. We're not going to please everybody, but our job is to try to please the majority as best we can because that's who we represent, unfortunately. You know, this is in one of those situations where it's a right, it's a right or wrong answer, it's just we have to vote as far as the public wants. So that's, that's right.
I just.
My bad, I turned.
I just wanted to add, being on council, we have had current business owners come forward. All the backs of the buildings are not accessible for trucks to unload and take their food items or delivery items through. And my grandmother told me she would kill me if Town Hall was not accessible, and that's also not compliant with ADA laws. If we did want to temporarily make it a walking mall, you could knock Afton Inn down, spread the bricks down Main Street, get rid of a blighted building, and put a parking garage up, and all of it's all.
All good discussions, thank you, candidates. We have two additional questions, as I said earlier, for Mrs. Cockle. And I'm going to ask those, as she's asked me to ask her, in the order that she would like to answer the question, so we're flexible. So the first question we have, in the Front Royal Town Code, the mayor, this is why she wanted to answer this first, the mayor has responsibility for the operation and conduct of the Front Royal Police. As mayor, would you be in favor of a citizen advisory council to assist the police with police/citizen conflicts? Please explain why or why not you would consider a group like that to assist in resolving those issues.
Thank you. That's a good question. So I would commit to investigating this proposal if the citizens would like to see this happen. If the people believe it would enhance the relationships between our local police department and our citizens, I actually think our police department would welcome those opportunities for positive relationships with our citizens. I believe it's definitely, definitely worth entertaining, and I hope that those interested in this idea will bring it forward during public comment time and also be willing to serve on a citizen board. I know that we oftentimes have openings on our boards and struggle to get those filled, so this one might be one where people would be very interested. And I, and again, I think if it builds relationships, helps our communities, it would be, it would be a positive thing. Question number two.
So question number two. As a member of the Front Royal Town Council for two years, and now as a candidate for mayor, looking back, is there anything that you would have done differently during your tenure on the council? And if so, please provide some specifics on the issuer concern and how a different position would have benefited the town.
Okay, this one's going to probably take me more than a minute and a half, Mr. Agger, but I'm going to do my best. So first off, it's two and a half years, but it's counting, right? But hindsight is a beautiful thing. But hindsight is a beautiful thing, and so I'm just going to get right to it. I wish I'd worked sooner to build relationships with the board of supervisors for the good of the community. Even though I feel like I have, I wish I would have worked sooner and harder to make that happen. I wish, wish we could have repaired the relationships with the EDA in order to prevent an additional EDA. I already asked lots of questions, as everyone knows, but I actually wish I'd asked more. Like when we were told that creating a building department was a good idea. I would not have agreed to less meetings a month. We had four, we're now down to two. And I would not have agreed to doing away with two public hearings. We reduced that to one, and as I said, hindsight, I'm not sure that was the best idea. Last, I would, although I imagine there's more, but I'm going to, last, I would have worked harder to build relationships amongst my fellow council members. Ultimately, everyone I served with and have served with are good, caring people, and they ran on improving the town. And I wish we could have given a better image to the public that we were working together to make that happen.
Candidates, thank you so much for those answers and the insight you've provided tonight. And so at this time, we're going to ask them to make their final comments, their statements, and the things that they might have forgotten to address. So I want to start with Mr. Kilby, and then we'll work our way down the table. And we have a minute to do that to wrap it up. Thank you.
First, if you haven't noticed, I'm not a politician. I'm just a honest country boy from Front Royal, Virginia. I believe that I have a proven track record of professional experiences and accomplishments that will benefit the community of Front Royal. I'm not part of any special interest groups, which enables me to be able to evaluate each situation on its own merit. My goal is to represent the entire community by utilizing my knowledge, skills, and communications with the community to do what's best for the community. My goal is to bring our community together. I want to ensure the reliability of our government. I want to make fiscal responsibility the status quo. My goal is an honest and open government, inspiring and encouraging all to work for the betterment of our community. So join me and help me become a part of the town council. Thank you.
I think with a lot of the experience that I have from serving on the board of zoning, I saw about everything that could happen in 17 years with them. I'm already familiar with the inner workings of the town as far as zoning and planning go. And like Mr. Kilby said, I'm an old country boy. At heart, I was raised right here in town on Prospect Street. So, you know, I have the best sense of the town and the citizens at heart. The biggest thing I want to make sure of is that we have a community that is as safe, I won't say safe, but as safe as we can make it for our, for our children to learn, grow, and get a good education, for the seniors to have a good place to go when they need to, or if they want to go to the senior center or something, I think that's what we need to do. And again, if you could give me your vote for two years, I think I can hopefully try to make a difference. I could sure get on and run my mouth with you guys anyway. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for allowing us this opportunity to share our thoughts on these questions. I hope that I was able to provide some insight onto, to where my approach is to these questions. And again, I've been a resident of Front Royal for seven years. I was originally grew up in West Virginia, and I said, I'm a big, I'm a big history buff, and I said, I want to keep the town's charm intact. That's one of my major goals overall. I want to keep those boxes checked for, as to why I moved here. I think that the town has a bright future ahead, and I'd like to, you know, for, to move forward with some conservative values, to keep, to keep our town as abashed as it should be, not only for our visitors, but for our residents as well.
So thank you all for coming out tonight. You know, I appreciate you all taking time out of your Friday evening again, and thank you all for hosting this as well. And you're a great moderator, absolutely. Thank you for your help keeping us on time and everything. Again, born and raised here, my main mission on council is to just get back to the town that's already given so much to me. I can't get any more specific than that, other than the fact that I just want to see the town prosper and keep its small-town charm. You know, a lot, a lot, I think Councilwoman Morris touched on this, a lot of kids who leave here don't come back because they don't think there's anything that will provide them a quality of life. And I think with youth that we have, having something like a sportsplex or a YMCA building would be amazing for the youth. And, you know, would give some type of insight to when kids leave, they're allowed to come back and have kids of their own, and, you know, give a nice little insight of, you know, how much of that sense of community matters. I went to a big school, went to Penn State my freshman year, and let me tell you, coming from a small town like Front Royal, going to Penn State College is kind of a shock. So I think it's important that we prepare youth for the world, but also give them a sense of understanding that they can come back and have a family of their own and raise their kids right here in the Bay area. Thank you.
I am seeking to remain seated on the council for a full term after serving my one-year term in a special election to enhance the citizens of Front Royal's God-given liberties. I believe in a limited government, fully funding our law enforcement, having the lowest tax rates in Virginia, yes, that's ambitious, but we can do it, and keeping Front Royal what it is and what it was intended to be, and that is not Loudoun County. I'm not here to tell you why not to vote for any other candidate on this ballot this year. I'm here to tell you why I should remain on the council. I cannot be bought, bullied, or silenced. Despite sitting on council, I have continued to show up and speak out at almost every single school board meeting over the last year and several board of supervisors meetings. My kids and I knocked on over 3,000 doors last year alone, not for me, but for Governor Glenn Youngkin, Jason Mieres, and Winsome Sears. I knew that with the three of them in leadership, no matter what happened in my election, there was and is hope for the state of Virginia. Whether I'm re-elected or not, you will see me at council. I don't quit, and I care. This is not only our money, i.e. our taxes, but this is our livelihood. So I ask that you vote November 3rd. Thank you.
It's November the 8th.
Eight. It's been a long week. Thank you, Bruce. Vote November 3rd early. Starts next week.
Yeah, that's right. I wish I had a teleprompter, but I'm going to read this. You've heard all of the candidates' feels tonight, and I would, and I would like to leave you with one last impression of me. I will help to rebuild the trust and confidence in the Front Royal government. I believe that all people have the right to live freely and equally, with the right to protect their families. I promise to be transparent and do my due diligence with every town council decision. I will protect our residents by overseeing the annual budget, keeping taxes low, improve town infrastructures, span economic development, support public safety, and help improve the town's operation efficiencies. This is our town and our future. Together, let's make Front Royal the best place to live, work, and raise a family. Vote conservative, vote Bruce Rappaport for town council.
So first, thank you for organizing this event and inviting me. Thank you to those who took your time tonight to attend and those that might be watching it on the roll exam or video later. Also, thank you to all the candidates for running. I have a tremendous amount of respect for anyone who is willing to serve their community. Serving on town council since January of 2020 has given me an opportunity to see how challenging and rewarding serving as an elected official can be. And if you're willing to offer your time and effort, you deserve appreciation from your community. So thank you. In closing, I was born here, raised here, graduated from Warren County High School, went to college, and returned to the community to work and raise my own family. I've dedicated my life to the children and families of Warren County. Again, I consider the role of mayor as an extension of my public service to this community. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected mayor, I plan to use my leaders, leadership skills to move the town forward. I will strive to find common ground amongst the council members whenever possible. I've always had a desire to unite people, and for the record, I don't like divisiveness. If you agree that you'd like to see a positive future for the town of Front Royal and this community, I would humbly ask for your vote in November.
Well, this concludes the forum for this evening. Again, would you please help me in thanking the candidates for being here today? I hope you found this informative, and I want to say thank you to this audience again this year. Last year, we had a little bit larger crowd, but again, a wonderful group to work with. You should give yourselves a hand. I couldn't believe how well this would run tonight. Thank you. And as we wrap it up tonight, I mentioned earlier that the candidates have agreed to stand around, stick around, we should say, they will stand around if they want to, you can walk in. But to stick around and to answer any of your questions that might have concerning some of the discussion we had this evening. Again, to St. John Parish, thank you very much for the use of the hall. Ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening, drive safely.